Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 12, 2015 Selectmen's Meeting. I don't have to say Sewer Commissioners Meeting anymore, do I?
No more.
All right, so could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, President, Mr. Titlebaum, Mrs. Whiteside, Mr. Troppiano, Mr. Slaven, Mr. Holmes is absent, Town Councilman and Town Administrator are both present.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Titlebaum. He's excited today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Funny play ball, that's all right. All right, next is announcements, Mr. Titlebaum?
Is this the time to bring up my 48-hour business?
No, not yet.
Okay, not yet?
No, we'll get to it, though.
I don't know that I have any announcements.
All right, Mr. Slaven, please.
I'd like to thank Municipal Maintenance today, if anybody was on Main Street. Not only were they sweeping and cleaning, they were cleaning the private properties right along Main Street, cleaning up people's walls, et cetera. Hopefully, all of you will take care going forward, because there's a lot of hard work today. That's it.
All right, Ms. Whiteside?
Yes, I have several, thank you.
Okay.
The Wareham Recycling Center located in East Wareham is up and running, obviously, still. They have a sport quilt for a raffle, kind of like the one at the library, although they haven't told us what the tickets are selling for. The center is open Wednesdays and Saturdays, and they also have composter bins available to purchase or win through an ongoing raffle. I would ask the Town Administrator if he was aware of the compost bins being available for sale?
No, that had not been brought through my office.
Okay, thank you. The Y is sponsoring, well, now I'm going to go to the end of that one. No, I'll do that one. Y is sponsoring a cleanup on May 30, 2015, from 9:00 to 12:00, and a group of citizens is sponsoring a townwide cleanup on the 30th and the 31st. You pick the time, two days. The Y begins at the Wesley United Methodist Church or the Town Hall parking lot, and the route will be explained to you at that time. You will be given trash bags, gloves, and route maps, and that's exactly the same way that the private citizens are running their cleanup on the 30th and 31st. So they overlap, they dovetail. We hope to see you all there. Buzzards Bay Play Productions presents A Night in Havana on May 30. Doors open at 8:00, and the show begins at 8:30. You're going to be going back to a 1950s Cuban nightclub. There are some of us who are old enough to wonder why we would do that. I don't know.
The Ricky Ricardo thing.
Right. Applications are still being accepted for the Senior Work-Off Program. Please pick up the applications at the Council on Aging or in the Selectmen's Office. The record will show that Mr. Holmes is present at 7:05.
Thank you.
The Library is holding a fundraiser on June 14 at Tyhonet Pond Canal. Join the Friends of the Library for a rubber duck race by buying one race duck for five bucks, a six quack of six ducks for 25, a baker's dozen for 50, or a golden flock of 25 for 100. Ducks may be purchased ahead of time at the Library during regular Library hours, or the Next Friends used book sale on May 28, 29, and 30. And I have to say, even though they are having a book sale that weekend, they also are going to be joining in on the cleanup. Garden Club is having its spring plant sale at the Old Methodist Meeting House at 9:00 in the morning, starting at 9:00. Get there early, because all the good stuff goes in about five seconds, because there's a lot of really good stuff, but there are a lot of people really looking for it, too. WCTV is having its regular meeting at Agawam Village, and they have no guests, so if you really feel like spouting about something, volunteer, be the speaker. The Historical Society, the Historical Society on May 18 at 7:00 p.m. is going to be in conjunction with the Wareham Village Association, talking about the early days in Narrows Village. That also will be held at the Old Methodist Meeting House. The Y 5K is this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., and you can still enter, apparently. Congratulations to the Key Club, who finally, or they officially received their charter from the Kiwanis Club after their first year. Key Club is a service club at the high school, and we're looking forward to working with them on the cleanup day. And I guess I'm going to read you something and make you think. Van Wick Brooks wrote in 1940, contain the remarks made by the Mayor of Haverhill at the funeral of John Greenleaf Whittier, we all know who he was, and what he said was, "Here may we be reminded that man is most honored, not by that which a city may do for him, but by that which he has done for the city." Sound a little familiar? And then, Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes, in a Memorial Day address in 1884, stated, "It is now the moment when, by common consent, we pause to become conscious of our national life and to rejoice in it, to recall what our country has done for each of us, and to ask ourselves what we can do for our country in return."
Did you do Mr. White?
That was WCTV, that was actually Mr. White.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, you got sort of missed, so why don't you announce?
I was missed?
Yeah, we didn't want to, well, you are, and we want to make sure that you don't get missed.
No, good evening, everyone, and, you know, we're coming up on, today's the 12th, aren't the 11?
It's the 12th, I believe.
It is the 12th, all right, okay, I wrote down the 12th. You know, Memorial Day is coming. I know that, I have noticed, received many phone calls from people, some compliments, some complaints this week about, you know, looks of the town, but, you know, I'll be out there with Sean this week with a shovel and a broom and trying to clean some of that sand up, and so, there's a lot of damage done over the winter, this winter, and so it's going to take a little extra cleaning on everybody's part, I think, so just keep going, take little bits at a time. I know that Mr. Sullivan and his team are doing the best they can with the resources they have to get out there, and enjoy the start of the summer and be safe. That's it.
All right, next up is Citizens Participation. Is there anyone here to speak to us this evening? Come on down, sir. You'll be next, Nora.
You'll see in a second. It's not a weapon. Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Gagel. I'm an active member of the, excuse me, the Veterans' Day Committee Celebration Committee, and I'm here as a spokesman for Bob White, who's behind the camera, and I'm just going to give you a brief update of what's happening with the Memorial Day celebration, okay? And right now, we're in the middle of identifying all the veterans' markers at the gravesites, and three of the cemeteries are done, Long Neck, Agawam Cemetery, and today, Bob and I finished the Center Cemetery, okay? And just a brief reminder to the people of what that encompasses is that, in the back here, I have some markers, and we're cleaning up not only the markers, the ones that are damaged, but the ones that need to be changed in location, so they're all in a uniform row. We're going to have a group of kids from the middle school come in and place new flags. So we've removed all the old flags, and the new ones will be placed in these medallions. And the medallions here, the first one is, they represent all the wars, the wars we couldn't get new medallions for, or replacements for, obviously, the Spanish-American War. There's some Civil War medallions there that are already in pretty decent shape, we had a few of those, World War I, World War II, the Vietnam War, Korean War. Now, I'm going to show the camera this. This one is the Revolutionary War, it's got 1775 on it. Bob's going to focus the camera in on this. And on the back of these are loops, the bottom two loops are for the poles that go in beside the grave tombstone, and the kids are going to come in the day before Memorial Day, the 22nd of May, and place all brand-new spanking new flags in the top one here. So they're going to be firmly in the ground, so when the people come for this celebration or observance, it's going to be a very impressive day. So, we have Noah Young, Matt S., myself, Steve Ruiz, we've been doing this, and Judy, you've been involved in this, too, obviously. Judy, would you say a few things about the list that you and Bob have been working on to identify the veterans that we need to find out where their markers are, just briefly?
Sure. We had two lists, and then we had the municipal maintenance records. One of the lists came from the Veterans Agent over a period of time, and it lists the veterans from all of the wars from the beginning of time who were from Wareham. Then we had a list from the cemetery of all of the people who were buried in the cemeteries who were veterans, whether they had lived here or not. The lists were not totally integrated, so then we went to the actual file folders in the Municipal Maintenance Department and were able to track down some other things. Unfortunately, some of the oldest records are not available, they were lost in time someplace, and so it was, there was probably 28 man-hours, woman-hours, put into looking through the records. That doesn't count the time that you guys have been out walking in the fields planting those medallions. I'd also just like to point out that they're plastic. Don't steal them, they are worth nothing to anybody except the person whose grave it is on.
Yes, you'd be heartbreaking to the families that-
Horrendous.
Yes, have their loved ones, memories or identification markers there that they were military veterans and served honorably. So basically, we're doing this for the veterans, okay? There are other markers there for auxiliary, there's firemen that have died in the past and police officers, too. No disrespect to them, but this is basically to observe the veterans. Now, Julio Roderick, when he comes back from vacation, I think, will be in charge of getting the flags together. The woman who will be coordinating the kids from the middle school, her name is Jessica Andrews, right? And we need volunteers to help Jessica at the cemetery on Friday, the 22nd, and I've already stepped up, I'm one volunteer, and what we're going to do, and I know Jessica's going to do a horrendous job in reminding the kids about respecting the cemetery when they're there. This is not a fun time, this is a serious task or job, and I think it's a good learning tool for the kids when they see what we're doing here. And so, the day of the placement of the flags will be Friday, May 22, so we need folks to step up, and you can all go to Bob White's webpage or email, wrcw@verizon.net, that's wrcw@verizon.net.
Thank you, Steve.
What time are they starting?
Pardon me?
What time are they starting?
The celebration?
No, the kids on the 22nd.
Oh, excuse me, 9:00 a.m., and they will stay there and be at every cemetery until it's all completed. And my job and the other volunteer coordinators are just to remind the kids of how to identify these markers, you know, all wars are representative, and where they are, it'll be a little difficult to find some of them, because there is so many graves there, it's a massive job. And thanks for Bob White and Jimmy Bruce from the Veterans Council.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask you to move on a little bit faster, because technically speaking, this is meant, and I want to kind of make, I already talked to Bob about this and others.
Okay.
Citizens Participation, we usually give you three minutes, and you get to talk about whatever. This is really an agenda item, and we have issues that we may want to talk to you about this. During Citizens Participation, we don't usually respond at all, we're just getting information, and then we put it, and then we bring it up as an agenda item. So for everybody who's here, in the future, any of these kinds of issues, we want to hear them, believe me, we want to hear them, but it doesn't work on our agenda, you know what I mean, if we don't have them. And this is a perfect agenda item, which deserves full time, not just three minutes, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
It deserves a lot more than that, so it's better if we get them on the agenda. I talked to Bob about it, but I mean that with everything, and we have a lot of people now that come in, and, you know what I'm saying? So I just want everybody to be aware of that.
I'm just here-
No, I understand.
Okay, so thank you for your-
I'm not trying to give you, you know, come down on anybody, I just want everybody to realize that this is not the right place for it to happen.
All right.
So if you could finish whatever you had, then, thank you. Thank you for what you do. All right, anybody else for Citizens Participation? Come on up. It isn't about a stopwatch, it's not about the stopwatch.
Good evening, I'm Nora Vicki, and with me tonight is Mary Bruce, and we'd just like to introduce you to our new project, which is called the Don't Trash Wareham Project. So this project is addressing the trash issue that we have in town. People have been before you before, you have discussed it, and we finally, a group of us decided to get together and formalize it and do something in a formal way. So Mrs. Whiteside has already explained the cleanup on May 30 and 31st, so we are reaching out to the community to get people involved and groups involved. We have the high school involved, we have the Historical Society, we have the Boys and Girls Club, South Coast Hospital, we have a whole group of people that are already coming forward, and we expect more to come forward in the next week or so. So this project is not just to clean up Wareham on May 30 and 31st, it's going to be ongoing. We'll be trying to have a litter prevention program in addition to picking up litter and cleaning the town. So basically, we're appealing to the town, to any citizen, to come out on May 30 and 31, anytime during the day that's convenient for you, pick up the trash. We have groups that are going to be doing streets, we have groups that are going to be doing areas of town, but we'd love to have everybody participate, and I think the little speech that we had earlier, "It's Not What You Can Do" is apropos, I thank you for reading that for us. So, again, I'm just going to very quickly say that stage one of our project is the cleanup, stage two is the litter prevention program, we're going to be doing some advertising and some signage, and we're asking that we get support from the Selectmen and support from the people in town.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Did I do that quickly enough?
Yes.
Any questions? Because we've got a Facebook page that you can go to, Don't Trash Wareham. You can contact us through don'ttrashwareham@gmail.com, and we'll be getting a website up shortly.
As you get closer to the time that you're ready to kick off, it might be a good idea to call, we'll put you on the agenda, and you can have a little more time to be able to really kick it off well, you know?
We'll do that. Thank you so much.
All right.
Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Citizens Participation? Seeing none, we'll move on. Appointments?
We have one appointment for Melissa Dyer to the Library Board of Trustees. Melissa, are you present? Would you like to address us? Please, speak into the mic.
Hi, I'm Melissa Dyer, I'm the president of Wareham. I am very much interested in becoming one of the Board of Trustees for the Library. I've spoken before you before in the Citizens Participation about my love of libraries and the need for more active participation in the town, both the citizens and the Board of Selectmen and whoever can get involved in it. I'm willing to put in whatever time and energy is necessary to help our library out in whatever capacity I can. I do have a fundraising background, I've worked for the YMCA for, this one, just for three years, but overall for 15, and I'm very comfortable working in fundraising and generating interest in different kinds of projects, and this one, as it's close to my heart, this is my number-one priority outside of work.
Very nice. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Peter.
No, I'm well aware of your love for the library, we've discussed it at the Y a few times, and thank you for stepping up, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Motion, please?
I make a motion that Melissa Dyer of 10 Agawam Lake Shore Drive, Wareham, be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees to a term to expire any later than June 30, 2018.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm standing, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
You can pick up the paperwork tomorrow in the Selectmen's Office and then be sworn in at the Clerk's Office.
Okay, so now we're going to drop down to any other business for the time, for a minute. Anybody, go ahead, Peter.
I have one. This is in response to the big news story that took place yesterday, where the NFL handed down its punishments of the New England Patriots and Tom Brady and a couple of the personnel, and I spoke with the chairman, and he agreed that perhaps a proclamation might be in order, and authorized me to go ahead and draft one for the board's consideration. I'd like to read it if I might.
Go ahead.
Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Proclamation, whereas Roger Goodell is the commissioner of the National Football League since 2006, whereas Roger Goodell's first job in professional football was as a ball boy for the New York Jets Football Club, whereas Roger Goodell is the first commissioner in the history of the National Football League to commission, authorize, or otherwise allow a league sting operation to take place against a member club during a conference championship game, whereas Roger Goodell previously demonstrated clear bias against the New England Patriots Football Club in 2007, when he imposed plainly excessive penalties against the club for sidelined videotaping of otherwise discoverable defensive signals. Whereas Roger Goodell has again demonstrated clear bias against the New England Patriots Football Club with the excessive punishment against the club and individual club personnel he handed down yesterday. In witness therefore, we, the Wareham Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim that Roger Goodell is still serving as the New York Jets Football Club's ball boy, notwithstanding his current title and grotesquely large compensation, and further, hereby additionally proclaim that Roger Goodell is no longer welcome to sully the town of Wareham with his presence, and further in that regard, have hereunto set our hands and cause the official seal of the town of Wareham to be affixed this 12th day of May, 2015. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Patrick G. Troppiano, Chairman, Judith Whiteside, Clerk, Steven Holmes, Peter W. Titlebaum, Alan H. Slaven.
Wow. Go ahead, Ms. Whiteside.
The last proclamation, I believe, that we wrote was to the City of Boston. It was a very somber and sad occasion. To sit here and krabble-frats about something over which we have absolutely no control and many of us have zero interest is to make a mockery of our government, in my opinion, and I'm not kidding. I don't think it's funny, and I'm not signing that.
Anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
I just want to make a comment that, you know, sports is a child's game, and professional level is played by big kids for very high salaries, and we all seem to lose focus of what's important in the world. Professional athletes are not real role models in the real world today, so I understand what Peter's talking about, I understand that the issue is, seems unfair and everything else, but at the end of the day, it's really irrelevant.
Well, it was offered as a diversion, apparently it wasn't taken as such.
I know, but still, it's-
Steve, do you have anything? Okay, so, does anybody want to second his motion?
I would support a letter to the Patriots supporting them, you know, and that would be it, not something that we would attack somebody else, that's all.
Okay, so I have no second? Seeing none, we'll move on.
We'll draw him.
Okay, next up is Highland, Inc., review of a license. Come on down.
Hello?
Hello. Good evening, for the record, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering, and this is for renewal of a license, it's an earth removal permit that's been active, it's a, every three years it expires, we've had it since 2006, so this will be the fourth term, if you will. They've complied with the, there's 19 conditions on the license from 2012 to 2015. We submitted a package to the Selectmen's Office, which you have before you, complying with the requirements, the plans that were submitted back in '06 and revised in 2011 are still the plans of record, and they are actively excavating that same area, they're not even close to meeting their limit every year or every day. They're providing it, this is for Highland, Inc., this is map 128, Lot F, this is east of Glenn Charlie Road, north of Route 25, south of White Island, so it's out in the middle of the woods, up in that area, and again, they've complied with all their permit applications, they have, they've been paying their 25 cents per cubic yard excavated, we've been monitoring the excavation and the quantities, submitting monthly letters, quarterly reports, bonds are in place, so we'd like, hope the, this board would continue to allow them to operate.
Any questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I guess, you know, it's more of a comment than a question, I guess, you know, thank you, John, for coming in, and, you know, I think it was about maybe three years ago, we had a very different meeting here, and I want to thank you for all your help, because you, if it wasn't for you turning all that around, I think back then, they wouldn't be doing this anymore, if you remember. I have senior reports, Mr. Sullivan, if he has any issues, I think, you know, they've been putting out the regular reports of the cubic feet that are taken, the checks that are coming in. I believe we're all paid up at this time, right? We don't have any back issues, Mr. Sullivan?
No, we're all paid up.
Everything's all paid up, right, so-
We cashed them, so.
I'm sorry?
We cashed those checks.
Oh, they didn't bounce, so that's, that's good, I guess, right? Because back, back about, this was about three years ago, Mr. Chairman, we, I mean, we were really at a standstill, we weren't getting any money, we weren't, you know, we weren't getting paid, so I think it's really improved, and I certainly will support your renewal, and thank you again.
Ms. Whiteside?
Question for you, sir. You are charged 25 cents per cubic yard, what is the end price?
What is the end price?
Yeah.
This is Graziano Redimix, they actually use it for the, for their concrete, they've been using this land for about, they bought it about 50, 60 years ago, this is in the manufacturing of concrete, sanders, a component in cement, so basically, they drive down, they take about five loads out, probably, a day, on the average, and they use it to mix in their, at their concrete plant.
And what do they make at their concrete plant? Blocks?
No, concrete, cement, they pour-
They pour cement?
Foundations, they pour, things like that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Peter? Alan?
Did you want to consider raising the rate or not? It's been there a long time.
I would.
Well, I need a motion, and you have to make it, so.
Okay. Well, actually, it would first be to change the conditions, Condition 19 says Highland-
You could make the motion with the change of, with the change.
Okay, all right. I move that Highland, Inc. is, be granted an earth removal permit to allow earth removal- I move that Highland Inc. is, be granted an earth removal permit to allow earth removal with the conditions at the following address off Glen Charlie Road, east Wareham, Mass. Permit is effective as of June 16th, 2015, and expires on June 16th, 2018. The condition shall, condition number 19 shall be changed to say Highland Inc. shall pay $1 per cubic yard for the term of this permit.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I would consider going to like 50 cents, which I think is reasonable. The other problem I have, though, is we haven't really notified of this, but the actual article that we have on our agenda says review of license. It doesn't say review and vote, or review and possible vote.
It does, that's correct.
So, therefore, I mean, tonight's discussion should unfortunately just be the review. If we wanna raise the rate, we can discuss that, and then John can go back, and we can schedule a week or two at the most and take care of this, 'cause I think it's a June date. We have to have this finalized by John?
June 16th.
I don't think it's fair just to raise the rate right now and not let them know about it, but also, the agenda doesn't say for us to vote on this.
Rich, is that, is that problematic?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it's, it's more a matter of the custom that you've developed that unless it says, you know, consider and vote, or review and vote, or somehow puts vote in there, you know, the public has, has become used to your doing it that way. You know, if, if at some point you, you, you know, took a vote to, to say, anytime we put something on the, on the agenda, you know, that if it doesn't say vote, it's still possibly up for a vote, you know, that's one thing, but, you know, right now, you've got a custom in place.
All right, so we can vote on it next week. It won't be a problem, but we, we gotta come up with, with a number.
I will withdraw my motion.
So, let's come up with a number. If you guys wanna change the number, then they need to know about it.
I think a motion that we propose that we continue the process as it is, but change the 25 cents to 50 cents.
Per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard.
Which is item 19.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Slavin. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so a motion made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion about the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Why?
The...
Why would you, why would you?
The value of the product...
What is the point of view doubling the man's contract?
The value of the product going out of there is, is worth 25 cents more a cubic yard. The sand, the stuff we supply out of Wareham actually is a particular quality that's special for the making of concrete, et cetera. The stuff is going out of here, you know, we're losing a natural resource, and we're only getting 25 cents a cubic yard. We're not holding anybody up, and at 50 cents, it's not gonna cause a problem. If it was $1 or $2, I'd, I'd have an issue then, but 25 cents over all this timeframe with inflation is really nothing. All we're looking at is really to cover what the inflation are effective over the years. What we're charging 25 cents for is probably worth about 10 cents when we first started.
Anything else, Steve?
I don't think it's any reason.
I just wanna know why she would double somebody's contract.
Go ahead, Ms. Whiteside.
Item two says the site mining operations shall be between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Does that get adjusted for daylight savings and, you know, other stuff? Do you know?
No, it doesn't get, I mean, again, they take five loads out, and basically, they come from Braintree down here in a, in a truck. They excavate, they go back and forth. One truck goes back and forth four days, four times a day, maybe five times if they can get lucky. So, they operate only when the, the operation is open.
All right, so motion's on the floor.
There is a second.
Made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's three, 3-2-0. So, that would be the stipulation. We'll, we'll, we'll vote on the license next week to finalize it.
Okay.
But that will be one of the, the changes on the license. They might wanna let them know.
That's it. And that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Now, that's, we're asking John to go back with that number. That doesn't mean they're gonna agree to it.
Well, that's true. They could say we're not gonna, we don't care, we don't want it anymore, but...
This is not, this is private property, is it not, Mr. Chairman? This isn't town property, is it?
Yeah, but there's gravel removal...
I understand that part, that we have to have a thing in place, but this is not town property.
No, it's not.
So, to make it seem like the town is giving them something, we're not. It's not town property.
We don't give them anything. Grazianno owns the property.
So, to say that we're charging them double, or we're suggesting double because we're giving up a resource, we're not giving up anything. It's his property.
Well...
Not true.
It's not true.
Well, yeah, there's some laws regarding materials, whether you move them in the town or out of the town. There's a whole bunch of, of regulations that...
It's not town property.
State, no, you're absolutely right, Steve.
No, but the roads are.
It's a town asset.
But the road they use is...
The road they use is...
I understand.
And I don't know what...
I got that part.
I don't know what one of those trucks weighs loaded.
About 60,000 pounds, 60,000 to 70,000 pounds.
Which is...
But, I mean, if I can interject, and, and I can see where you're heading here, you can understand that we are, I believe, the only earth removal permit in town.
We are.
If you sit at the end of a few different roads, you're gonna see trucks coming in a lot more without the Grazianno name on the side of them. So, I think by imposing, you're imposing, you're punishing my client for doing the right thing, if you will, when you can actually see if you do a agricultural type and they're exporting that sand outside of town limits goes on pretty readily throughout the town. And if you drive around town and you see these trucks loaded with sand, where are they going?
That's true.
If they don't say Grazianno on the side of them, there's five trucks a day coming from this. My client would, would look very carefully at potentially going the agricultural route. They've given over, in the past three years, $20,000 to the town of Wareham, and now you're asking them to give $40,000 to the town of Wareham. So, over the next three years. And I understand it is a valuable resource, but as Mr. Holmes said, it is their property. If once they cannot mine the property for their, for their business, it's gonna turn into a development, it's gonna turn into other uses on this property. So, I just want the board to, to be cautioned, if you will, that, be careful, the, the stick that you're using, that, that, you know, as it is, the 25 cents caused the brothers to break up, and now only one of the Grazianno companies, not Braintree dropped out, Bridgewater's the only one that's actually using the pit at this point. So, you're, you're basically telling them that you don't want them to do this.
Can you back up and just explain that comment for those of us who may not... It was a different price before, is that what you're saying, and they, they...
No, Wareham imposed the 25 cents onto the property back in, I believe, 2009. It became a bylaw. And we were in the middle of our permit, and that's what Mr. Holmes was discussing. We came back before the board in 2011 to 2012. They made a condition to pre, pay back from, I believe, the permit of when that 25 cents came in. So, my client did pay back that money in addition to going forward 25 cents per yard. So, my client has done that. So, is that what the question was, Mrs. Whiteside?
I think so. You, okay, and you indicated...
Well, we're the only one paying 25 cents. That's, that's, I guess, what I'm trying, we're the only one operating under the earth removal permit provisions in town.
You see, just, just so everybody understands, if you have an agricultural use, you're building bogs, whatever, you can move the materials at will. It's, it falls under the agricultural use, what is it, 41, what is it, what is it? 41... 40A, right, yeah, 40A. So, if you have a, if you're 40A and the property's registered as 40A and you are building cranberry bogs, you can move it wherever you want, so, and they do, and they sell it. And I know exactly what you're saying. They do sell it, and it happens all the time. This is a gravel removal permit, which is a little different because it's on land that's not in 40A. And so, there's different rules.
Yeah.
Okay, right. So, you know, that's sort of the bylaw, and I guess, you know, if that's what the board so decides, then that's what the board decides, you know, and you're gonna have to just tell them that that's what it's gonna be, I guess.
Me.
Absolutely.
I just have a couple of...
Go ahead.
Where are other sources of this raw material that would be available to your company?
Where are they?
Yeah.
There's lots of pits around.
There's, yeah, there's a lot of gravel pits around southeast of Mass. in, in Wareham, Glen Charlie Road, off of Glen Charlie, all that area up there, off of Charge Pond Road. There's a lot of nice sandy soils up there. Plymouth has, has a lot of pits right off of Boon Scenic, Boon Scenic Highway. There's a pit way back in there, it's a Larusso pit, very, very substantial in size. Yep, Carver, you know, basically, unfortunately for Grazianno, they're in Bridgewater and Braintree, whereas Carver, those concrete companies in Carver or Middleborough, they're actually on sites that they can mine and take their sand right from their site.
So, they, they have a plant...
They have the plant right on the, right on the location.
On the land, yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll vote on this next week for the final, okay?
Okay, so I should come back next weekend?
Yeah, you don't have to come back.
Well...
Well, he does have to come back, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, he does.
Well, unless you, if you don't agree, I guess you'd have to come back.
I'm sure he'll be back.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask one more? I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, what do you need? One more question.
Okay. So, do, who are, who goes out and checks that you really are taking only 2,044 cubic yards? I know we get a report, but who checks on that?
We check that. I'm a professional land surveyor and a professional engineer.
Okay.
We go out and survey that location. We've actually had the existing conditions surveyed, and now we take incremental checks on these, on the pit.
And who pays you?
My client. It's a very costly operation. They have to run the, the trucks. They're running trucks and paying for manpower and paying for trucks to come from Braintree, from Bridgewater down here, taking 28, 28 yards of material and then driving back to Bridgewater. It's not an, it's not a, it's not inexpensive operation for them to come get 28 yards of sand from, from Wareham. They'd prefer to get it somewhere else.
No, I'm, I'm sure that they would, but...
They also have a cover requirement as well as they get to a certain limit.
So that it doesn't fly off...
They cover the material as well.
Oh, absolutely.
They have those roll thingies?
Yes.
Okay. Help me out here. You report your findings to the town, but your findings are paid for by the person that is being checked on.
Yes, correct.
Well, in banking terms, that would be called a conflict of interest.
You, you have provisions in your bylaws that allow someone to come out and check ours if you'd like to pay for them.
The amount of money is so small overall, that I don't think it's worth, Mr. Churchill's time to sit there and come back and not come back with a true number.
Plus, plus, let's make it clear that Mr. Churchill, and, and I know this gentleman very well, I've been here a long time.
I'm not trying to insult anybody, I'm just trying to learn what...
What I'm trying to say is, he would never risk his license, which is what he would. That stamp is the most important thing he has.
He just wouldn't do it.
By going out there and forging documents relevant to how much material they take out, he just wouldn't do it.
So, you survey at specific times, and that's the report that we get, and then the company...
We, we actually go off with their quantities. You take 28 yards out, so you go off their quantities. They basically count by trucks. And what we do is, we do incremental surveys as, to verify, for instance, prior to an annual, on an annual basis typically, you know, it's not every year on the dot, but we go out there and measure and make sure that they're excavating. You, you can't change that. You could send someone out there tomorrow, and, and there's, there's only, you can't put it back, obviously. I mean, it's, it's, the quantity that's been removed has been removed, and the plans that you have on record are the plans of record.
Okay, and just one last question. Do the neighbors object? I know they've all signed off, you know, the green cards and everything, but has, has there been...
It's way in the woods.
We've had, we've had the permit since 2006. We notify the abutters.
Okay.
This board has a provision in there that they can request an annual review. Back in 2010 and 2011, they requested that. We came before this board. I believe there's been one abutter that has mentioned back in '06 when we originally, '05, '04, '05, one abutter stood up and came to the meetings, but that's the only abutter that I have ever seen at one of these meetings since 2004, since we started the application process.
Is it considered an attractive nuisance?
It's out in the middle of nowhere.
That doesn't mean anything in this town. You can find mattresses and TV sets in the middle of nowhere.
You wouldn't know it's there. You, you, I mean, how, it's not a nuisance if you don't know it's there, and the abutters...
Kids with motorbikes. I'm, again, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to get my arms around whatever it is that, do you have it fenced?
Is it fenced in, no.
Okay. Do kids, motor, do individuals ride motorbikes or ATVs or other things?
They shouldn't.
I just wanna know whether they do or not.
Do they? They ride all over private property in town. But yes, this is, this is, again...
And you're posted?
Of course they're posted, and we have a gatekeeper actually at the entrance of the road.
Yep.
There's a, there's a house where they, and they pay him to make sure no one comes in and out of that property.
I can tell you, back in 2001, they proposed a casino out on that three, it's a 300-acre parcel, and they proposed a casino with an entrance off of the highway, 'cause that's, it actually connects to, to what, 25, I guess that would be on that end, right? And it was gonna, and they, it just didn't work out. The Indians didn't have their right paperwork together and so on. It was supposed to be that and a hockey thing as well they were putting in there. You know, what do they call that?
Complex, ranked complex?
No, instead, instead of like the Bruins, one step down from them, whatever it is, you know, semi-pro, whatever, kinda hockey was gonna be in there and stuff, but it's the same property. It's been there a long time, and it's really, the reason why it was really nice to be a casino is it's really hidden. It's really hidden in there. I don't know if you've gone by, but it's really hidden.
Absolutely. You can see, Google Earth it, and you can see it.
Yeah, it's, you look across those, you look across those cranberry bogs, and you can't even see it up there.
Right, you can't see it from people's houses.
Anything else? All right, then we'll, we'll deal with this next week. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, now, discussion, grant process, and possible vote on the Open Space Committee.
Go ask him a question.
Is she here? Come on down. Before you sit down, Steve, I wanna point out that there is a, a posted meeting for the Master Plan Committee. I hope you'll come.
I responded that I was available for the meeting.
Thank you.
Sandy Slavin, Open Space Committee.
Brian Lixfield, Open Space Committee.
Joe Leggett, Open Space.
Okay, so, tell us...
It is our understanding that we must have the Board of Selectmen and FinCom approval before any committee or town department can submit a grant for community preservation funds, and we're here to request your approval before we submit three grant requests.
Okay, is, can I just ask counsel, what, is this the normal, is this procedure? Okay. All right.
It's policy.
Can you tell us what the, the grants are that you're requesting, or the grant requests are?
We're looking for three possible, we're looking to do three grants for the fall town meeting for community preservation funds. One would be to create a multi-use...
Trail system.
Trail system.
Trail system through Bryant, uplands on Bryant Farm. We thought we could do a dog park there, but the wetlands are, there's just too much wetlands, and we didn't have enough setback to put any type of structure like that. So we would like to use a multipurpose trail system, a small parking lot and a trail system that could be used by handicapped, accessible item, people.
Okay.
That was one.
Or your baby carriages, that kind of strollers. Okay.
So it's wider than a normal path, and it has to be packed down with probably some type of stone or something, so it could be wheeled on.
All right.
The second one we're looking to do is, we would like to have a grant to create a dog park.
And where would this be?
Mine at Forest in the area that's been recently cleared by the red pine harvesting that's already down and open. We thought we could put an acre worth of dog park in a small parking area off that. I did research the grant, the deed for Mine at Forest in perpetuity, did I get that word right?
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity. It's designed for park, forestry, and passive recreation. That's in the deed.
Okay. And the last one?
And the, the last one is for the engineering to redo the Swift Beach Association playground. The association's already given us a list of what they would like to see ultimately, and, you know, we need to get the engineering process going, figure out what we can do, you know, what needs to be done in order to put it all back together again properly.
Okay. Members, Mr. Slaven.
We'll go down all three. First question for each one of them, what's the cost?
We don't have cost yet because we haven't developed, until we have approval to, to submit the grant, we don't know what the cost is. It'd be a lot of time, effort in it if you don't approve it. So once you have the approval, we can then work on the estimated cost. But everything you, we've talked about has been included in that recreation assessment that was done last year.
Each one of the three items, what's the cost to the town after these things are done?
No incremental cost.
Are there going to be any requirements of municipal maintenance, any town department to maintain these?
The Swift Beach would be mowed like it is now. We expect the dog park to be supported by a nonprofit organist, Friends of the Dog Park will be established as a nonprofit to support the expenses of the dog park, including poopy bags and things like that. And the trail for the multi-use trail for Bryant Farm, Open Space, has stepped up and said we will do the maintenance of that, that trail. So I see no incremental cost to the town or municipal maintenance, other than what they already do at mowing Swift Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification. The Swift Beach playground is indeed town of Wareham property. It's the Swift Beach Improvement Association that has agreed to assist the Open Space Committee in renovating the playground. I just want to make, get that on the public record, because I don't want people to be confused thinking that we're looking to use CPC money for private property, because that's not the case here.
Correct, it is town-owned land.
Right.
Okay, anyone else?
That's great.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to allow them to start the process?
Okay. Move that the Open Space Committee be authorized to go before the CPA...
To submit a grant request.
To submit grant requests to the CPC for the development of three different locations: Swift Beach, Mine at Forest Dog Park, and Bryant Farm. Mine at Farm, okay, Bryant Farm.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, five zero zero.
Thank you. And I did reach out to FinCom, and I have not heard back from them, because I understand their approval is also needed. But we as Open Space are working, are working toward the rectification of the safety issues that have been identified at the various playgrounds, and we, we're working with municipal maintenance in so much they would help us fall, find the people to do the work. Is that what I'm...
Contractors.
Contractors. They know who would be the best contractor to remove the tires, et cetera, et cetera. So no work by municipal maintenance personnel, other than working with us, Open Space, to get contractors to do the various tasks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
So can you just send me a, a rough outline of the, the dog park? I want to send it to Maya. Just make sure we don't need an additional rider on there or anything.
Yes.
Insurance.
Yes, yes, understand. As soon as I have something, I will share.
Yeah, just, I mean, it can be as broad as, as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, thank you. The next one is, it says discussion and possible vote of Bryant Way and Lynn Road. Now, I'm, I'm sorry, Bay Shantway. This is here because there was some question about what we wanted to assume down there. Now, the, the layout has been approved by town meeting. And I think, it's, for, for myself, I don't think, and I don't think the town administrator, I'm gonna ask him to tone in, wants to take anything other than the layout that was granted at town, town meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Just the road itself, not any additional properties or land. And that's the only thing, that's the only action we were supposed to take.
Right, and that's already been done by town meeting. We don't really need to ratify that at all, do we?
I think, I think it is supposed to come before the Board of Selectmen, because the town meeting action was to approve it, send it to the selectmen to authorize.
Okay, so we'll be taking just the road cut, just as it was laid out?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to check with town council on that. Also, whether or not we have to go to the registry of deeds if we're doing that rather than the full. I believe that, I think there's some little confusion. I thought if we took the full property, we had to go with, we had to basically vote on it and then also register it.
Yeah, I couldn't tell whether it was... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, Selectman Slaven. The question is good, because it helps me understand what the desires of the board might be. What town meeting did was to vote to accept the layout that you already performed. And that could be the end of the matter, if that's what you wanted. And at that point, the only thing that would have to happen would be that the town clerk enter the vote of the town meeting into the street acceptance book, which I know has been extensively gone over by a cast of, I won't say thousands, a cast of two or three or four. And that's all that would have to happen. Now, if we were in conjunction with the layout of the road and the town meeting acceptance, if we were acquiring the fee underneath the road, or an easement underneath the road, or ancillary properties, then we would need deeds from, to be given from the association to us, which you would vote to accept. And then I would take them over to the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and record them. But if it's your desire just simply to say, great, town meeting accepted the roadway, we're done, then there's nothing else to be done, other than to have the town clerk record it in the official records.
I think that's, I think that's what we want to do here, by the way. I'll get to you in a second. But I think, I believe that if we, we don't want to add anything to it. We want to just take what they, what they did meets and bounds on, and that's it. And it's already been accomplished, I believe, and I, I totally agree. Go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
The issue I have is precisely that when the records are only kept in the town, sometimes they're well-kept, sometimes they're not well-kept. I really, my preference would be, if nothing else, to record the vote of town meeting in the registry of deeds, so that we have a second backup. I know it costs a few bucks to record documents over there, but I really think going forward, it's best to have this information stored in a couple of places, and with a couple of governments even.
Okay, we'll ask, go ahead.
That, that's sort of, is part of my question, because my, it, it is, they are now both town-accepted ways. And so therefore, the public is allowed to go on them and off them. And they will be eligible for Chapter 90 reimbursement?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Plowing and maintenance.
The plowing and the, and, well, the, then, the maintenance, that, I'm not sure why we're motioning it exactly the same way that you said that you wanted to do it, because the drainage and all that other stuff, you're saying that we don't want to be maintaining that?
Because the drainage just doesn't remain in the line, doesn't remain in the road layout. It actually goes into private property someplace. There'll be, you know, the, the road layout isn't probably, if you looked at the road, and I haven't seen the plan, but typically, if you look at the raid, road layout, there's probably a, a head wall someplace to catch drainage coming down, you know, and all kinds of different things. We didn't accept that. There might even be, and I'm guessing, where this is fairly new, there may even be a drainage collection area, right? Which I bet money there is. And we don't want to maintain that either. That's not, that's not up to us. We're just taking care of the road, right? We don't want to add any of that extra stuff, right? Mr., Mr., Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, the, excuse me, the, yes, I should say, the, and the planning board took an action, that reference that we were not taking, taking the drainage. So maybe we should reference that in the vote, if you want. I know there's concern, somebody thought that we were taking land as well, so it wouldn't be taxed. That is absolutely what we're not doing. We're just taking the, the road layout, none of the drainage, that's still their responsibility. Only the road, we will maintain that, we will plow it, we will sand it, eventually sweep it someday. And, you know, it's, so I just want to make that perfectly clear, because there's been some thought and speculation that somehow we took taxable property, and we were taking that over, and it was getting one over on the town. And that absolutely is not what has happened, nor will we do.
Right. So go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
In light of all that, in light of the fact that we're just taking an interest in the roadway, not in the drainage, or, or any of the other issues, I really think it's incumbent to record this interest. We are taking the limited interest in the registry, so that it's on record in perpetuity, and not just kept in our own files.
Well, could I just say, isn't it recorded, Richard? Isn't the MYLR recorded already?
No.
For the road layout?
No.
Go ahead. Yeah, you're on.
Yeah, this thing's killing me. Mr., Mr. Chairman, the, the MYLR and all that information is part of your official vote. You know, I'll try to make it quick. The, the layout process has, has two very important parts. One, and they're equally important. One is this board's approval of the layout, which includes, you know, the meets and bounds, the MYLR, the whole file that went with your vote. And the town meeting is simply just merely blessing or ratifying your action. So everything that you took into account when you voted it is part of that file. So, yeah, there's a MYLR out there, I assume, and that would be part of the official record of your layout.
Right, but somebody records those MYLRs.
Not at the registry. Those just become part of...
So we have that information. So maybe it's not a bad idea then to record the vote of the town.
Well, I can, if, if their engineer can give me a, a nice meets and bounds recordable instrument, I can take it over to the registry and see what I can do with it.
We have, we have it already.
I'm sorry?
We have the meets and bounds.
I think we have one. So maybe you could take a look and see if you can record it.
They had, yeah, for the planning board.
It's filed with the clerk's office also.
And then, and then it's, it's there for, forever, you know? I mean, it's, I know it's not necessary, but maybe if the members feel more comfortable.
I would take a motion.
All right, okay, so let's have a motion to, to approve this road as accepted by town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
And also to that, that we're gonna register with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
Yeah, you can add that, Peter.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna, okay. All right, so, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero. Mr.'s, Mr. Holmes had to leave the room.
The only thing that I would add, that I think, since we're gonna be the last body that sees these things, is they, they come to us, we approve them, they go to town meeting, town meeting approves them, they come back to us. I think if, going forward, it would be wise to have a selectmen's policy requiring that these be recorded in the registry of deeds, so that subsequent boards understand that this is a necessary part of the process.
Okay.
Right, but I think it ought to be not at our expense.
Why don't you pass that down to council? This is a 1995, copper and beige explanation of the whole thing.
I know you are.
So...
I know you did.
So can we whip a policy up like that?
Yep.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
I'll work on it with council if the board wants, or...
I think that's great, but I also think we have to address the issue of town-accepted, ten-approved, private, private, no access, you know, there's like seven different things, and we, we keep pushing this off. And I'm obviously in a mood to get things done. So let's bring that forward on somebody's...
Well, that's not on the agenda.
I understand it's not on the agenda, but it is, Mr. Titlebaum's motion, and my second, indicate that the records need to be pristine and very accessible to the public.
And we, we will have to deal with that. I mean, I know you've been working on trying to identify all the roads.
They're identified now. We just have to take the next step of getting them, getting the state to accept the Chapter 90, so that we get the funds. There are 66 roads that are identified that we have not been being paid for by the state. So we need to, we need to move that along.
Sixty-six roads?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
We had discussed this before, that we needed to have a form for the clerk to certify these roads on, so that the clerk was comfortable so doing. I actually reached out to Attorney Bowen yesterday to see if you would speak with me on Thursday to try to get this done and come up with something that's satisfactory to the clerk and council, because it's her certification, it's, it's not ours. So that's what's necessary to get it on the Chapter 90 list.
All right, so we'll deal with it on Thursday.
That's not all that's required. There are actually three pieces of documentation.
All right. All right, moving on. Discussion and vote of conservation restriction for Tweedian Barnes. Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Browning. John Browning, representing the Wareham Land Trust. I'm here to ask the board to approve the conservation restriction on the property, which you see on the map in front of me. Don't be confused by the blue, that's not all water. Some of that's just wet landscape. The, at town meeting last fall, the explanation for the CPA grant included the fact that the town would hold a conservation restriction on the property. The Conservation Commission at the meeting last week approved the conservation restriction, but we require the approval of the Board of Selectmen, after which it will go to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environment for their final approval.
Okay, so you are gonna hold the, call the restriction?
I'm sorry?
The committee is gonna hold the restriction.
Yes.
The Wareham Land Trust.
Wareham Land Trust, right?
The, the Conservation Commission will hold the conservation restriction. The ownership is the Wareham Land Trust.
Conservation Commission holding it then. Okay, you got that? Any questions? Go ahead, Peter.
The re, one added, the, the reason for the conservation restriction is that it is required as a condition of a grant, which we are receiving of 72,500 from the EOEEA.
Yeah, we understand. Go ahead, Peter.
You know, I, I realize you were, you're, you're well into this process, and, you know, I'm not gonna be the guy to pull the rug out from under you. I, I will say for the record, though, that I am generally opposed to the notion of town bodies holding conservation restrictions. I think that it, it puts a, a burden on the town body that holds them. I think that it potentially embroils the town in litigation. So this is, is not my preferred road for going forward. I have to, I have to be blunt. But in this instance, this one is so far down the pipeline that I, I won't stand in the way. The only other thing I would say is, this conservation restriction differs somewhat from the one that we just executed with the Buzzes Bay Coalition, in that the reserved rights and exceptions don't, in the sense of this, don't really require a permission to the, to the extent. So I didn't, I don't see the need to add the language we did into the last one that says that such permission shall not be reasonably withheld. Again, we've got different parties in here. You're the ownership party this time around, the town isn't. So to, to that extent, this, this, this document as presented meets the needs of, of, of you and the town, I think, better than the, the other one did, which we, we had some back and forth on before we approved.
Okay, anybody else? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve the conservation restriction for Tweedian Barnes Central Corridor Extension, under the Wareham Conservation Commission, and the grantors, Wareham Land Trust, Inc., and the grantees, the Town of Wareham Conservation Commission.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, so...
Due to the signature or the acceptance of the commission.
Okay.
Conservation Commission.
Four zero one. Four zero one. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up. Now, if you look...
Yeah, they don't need to sign it tonight.
No, we're gonna sign it right here.
They'll let you know, they'll call you from the office when all the signatures are done.
All right, so in your packets today, there is a list... All right, so in your packets today, there is a list of things that we've been working on, pending issues. And actually, E and G are the same, okay? And there's a pending list. There you go, Ms. Whiteside. So, if everybody pulls out that pending list. All right, so adopt and update, the five-year plan was at the top of it. Has everybody got it?
Yep.
Yes.
This is how I'd like to do this. There's a lot on this list. I mean, this list is considerable in length. So, what I'd like to do
Do you want to give this to Mrs. Whiteside?
Well, what I want to do is I want each member to pick an item on the list that they think they can put together to bring it to the board with, and try to get, so in other words, we'll be doing five at a time. Everybody gets one, everybody decides which one they like, whatever's near and dear to their heart. You can look at the list and come up with something. And then, under your tutelage, you will come up with the necessary information for us to deal with it one way or the other.
You're talking to me?
To all of you, to everybody. Tutelage, yes.
I got that part.
Everybody.
Are we doing just priority one or priority two? And?
I think, I think you can use the whole list, because at some point, maybe if we handle them five at a time, we'll get through some of this list. You know what I'm saying?
But some of them overlap, my dear.
Well, if they overlap, then you have to say, well, okay, I'm taking those two. Because otherwise, you know, if we try to take these one at a time, we'll never get through this list. Never.
Okay, well, number
This reminds me of the, this list reminds me of the master plan.
Okay, so number eleven is Mr. Titlebaum and Mr. Slavin.
And I want to take, I'll take
Well, wait, wait, wait. Can we just note that eleven already is Titlebaum and Slavin? Right? Yes?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And I'm going to take the first one. I'll take the first one and I'll put that together for us. I'll start working on that and put that together to bring to the board.
Slavin needs to do two and three.
Why does he need to do two and three? Reports and actions done?
And, well, two, three, and four are all the same thing. Let's get them done. They're there, let's do it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the list obviously is not perfect. I mean, there's some things that overlap and what have you. But the point is that everybody, I don't see anyone here who can't take an item off this list, whether it requires you to take two items or not. Can't take an item off the list and work on it.
Right. But, may I?
Yeah.
Okay. For instance, number fourteen, we don't have to deal with because we're not the sewer commissioners anymore. But the issue of surplus buildings, buildings that are underused, buildings that are overused, and a five-year vision and plan or a master plan, those things are all interrelated. So, you really can't take one and it's like pork chops. You've got to take the whole loin.
Mr. Chairman, I think, to reiterate what you said just a moment ago, Mrs. Whiteside, you can take one, and if you solve three within that one, that's fine.
Exactly.
He's not saying that you can't exclude others.
Yeah, exactly. And I mean, they may, some may overlap.
You got stuff talking about trains there. So, if you take one of the trains, you're probably going to solve the other two at the same time.
And some people may hate some of them and not want to deal with them at all, you know? So, let's try it this way and let's see where we get, all right? So, I'll tell you what. Why don't you, by next week, everybody review this and come up with their suggestions? How about that?
That's better.
Would that work? Go ahead, Peter.
Just one question about the process here. So, let's say, you know, we take this thing, we work on it. We bring them out to your attention as an agenda item when we solved it or we want to consult with the board?
When you're ready, we'll put it right on the agenda. When you're ready to come to the board, we'll put it right on the agenda. And if you need the board's help in between, we'll put it on the agenda for that, too.
Okay.
All right? There's no reason why you can't have help from the board, right? Okay?
So, our picks are going to be gathered and input next week.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that'll give you time to kind of mess with that. All right, so that brings us to F. And that says, update status of special acts passed at town meeting. Mr. Slavin.
We all know that the sewer commissioner bill was pushed through and done on May first, so that is all taken care of. The other item that was on there, of course, was the funding for the Community Events Committee, modification of that special act, which was kind of left off to the side and almost ignored, but pretty close. I believe they were going to be on the Senate side, I think it's Senate Bill Number Ten ninety-nine. I think they were going to be working that today. Did you get a letter off at all?
Not yet.
Maybe too late. I don't think it matters. It was a straight, again, home petition. Hopefully, that will be taken care of either today or tomorrow. It'll go back to the House and then it'll come back in, because that actually had to be passed as well as the special act. And it, you know, it's in the same letter that the sewer commissioner bill was, and I don't know how it just got put off to the side.
It was nice for Susan to grab a hold of it, too. I know you talked to her and she kind of grabbed right onto it.
Oh, that was a sewer commissioner one, with the two of them. But the other bill, I haven't tracked down and realized I hadn't really moved on it at all, so I got that moving. And the other pieces, we're going to have to sit down and come up with a game plan for the modular and affordable housing combination, you know, for the mobile homes in the town. It's just not going to go simple and easily on its own. We're going to have to mobilize some different groups to help us with this.
That was a good pun.
Yeah, it isn't going to mobilize. It's been a problem right along.
And so, that's something we need to put on the agenda to actually work on.
So, we'll get that on when you're ready.
And that's it where current. Everything else is done and finished.
All right. Town administrators, report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're about halfway through the state budget process. The Senate Ways and Means Committee budget has come out. There were increases to Chapter Seventy in charter tuition reimbursements. At the state level, it's several million. Trickles down to us is about nine thousand. But the good news is there were no additional assessments, so I didn't see additional assessments on there.
Did you look at the municipal expenses? They look like they hit us for an additional four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
No, I pulled the chart that I had for that.
I went and opened up one, and I opened up, it was the municipal expenses, and it showed we were plus four forty. Can you double just, maybe I messed up, but I went down the Wareham line across with the school assessments and everything.
Did you pull up the cherry sheet or did you pull up the one where it goes straight across?
No, I pulled up the cherry sheet at the bottom, which you have Wareham, you can go straight across.
Yeah.
You keep moving, all the different items are listed. Just double check it. It looks as if that particular one on the expenses, you know, the expenses, they increased our expenses.
I'll double check.
I saw the nine thousand was no problem. I get that, that was fine.
Yeah, I didn't see that on the other side.
But that was the revenues, but I went into the expense side and it looks as if, again, that's what the number was. Just double check. No, because we weren't going to get much more. I was more concerned about the assessment, the expenses seemed to go up.
All right. All right, Mr. Slavin.
Well, he's shucking me up over there.
No, I don't, I think I'm with you.
Yeah.
I read the thing myself this afternoon, and I think I'm with you.
If there was four hundred and forty thousand, I'd be taking somebody's heart pills right now, so.
I'd get a few if you need them.
You got, what do they call those things? Electrolysis tablets?
Double check it anyways.
Well, let's just end on that one. I'll double check and send out an email to everyone. I received in my emails, it was very nice. It was called the SEDA Messenger, and it was the first volume, issue one. They did a very nice job putting out some of the information. And one of the most important information on there is something that we need to remind everybody, that the Public Service Grant Opportunity Mandatory Billers Conference is being held on May twenty-seventh at one P M. in the Town Hall Auditorium. If you are a nonprofit organization who provides public services to low and moderate income residents in the town of Wareham, you must attend this meeting to be able to apply for the grant. And I believe this is the twenty seventeen grant on there. And this is sort of a side note, and we've not been able to do it for this summer. But I think for a personal goal, I'd like to see if I could get the Board of Selectmen on board, is for next year to have a summer youth job program for the youth of this town and to start seeking grant opportunities now for it. Because I think what we have, with what we have going on, trying to establish cleaning, trying to establish pride in the town, I think that's one of the best things we can do. And just the, it will reap rewards. And this is probably something we should try and put together even before Fall Town Meeting, because if we need to use a grant from ourselves, from the free cash, I think it'll be an important opportunity. So, that's just a very basic outline of it. The other item is, I was not here last week to say it. I attended the Wareham Village Association Oyster Festival with my family, and it was a wonderful time. Really enjoyed it. I don't think my wife went past a booth that she didn't buy something from, so that was great. Lot of the chocolates and some really, really nice artifacts that came out for my father-in-law's birthday. So, the floating keychain for the boats and such, so it was really neat. So, I appreciate Mr. Brady and all the hard work done by the Wareham Village Association.
Anything else? All right, question? Go ahead.
Yeah, please. Thank you, Mr. Slavin. I hope you enjoyed your vacation. Thank you for the text today, letting me know that the executive was canceled. That was very nice. I have two points for you. One is a question on, down in onset, right near the boat ramp. Is there a scheduled plan on when they're going to finish that, was that Twelfth Street or Tenth Avenue?
Twelfth Street.
Twelfth Street.
Twelfth Street, isn't it?
I'm telling people that it's because the tire isn't ready to finish.
Right, they had a late one, late in April to have the
Twelfth, yeah.
They had the, opened up the plants, obviously, late due to the snow. There is another topping going on there. And also, one of the items we have is, believe it or not, when we redid that, there had been two sidewalks on either side of that. And people forget, because they were so rotten, you were able to park on them.
It was pretty bad.
We widened the street and put one sidewalk, which you need for handicap accessibility and such. However, it's such a narrow road, you still, it looks like the road commissioners are going to take it on to see about not having parking on that street. Because right now, even with it being widened, because the people can't park up on the curbs anymore, it's too, it's just not wide enough, especially with a fire truck coming down.
So, you think maybe sometime in May, they'll get that project finished?
I don't have a definitive
Early June.
definitive one. I'd like, I'll talk to Mr. Menard about it and get the true update for the board.
But my answer is correct to people that they just couldn't finish it because the plant wasn't open and they weren't really
That's correct.
Is that correct?
You had sort of the binder put down, then you have the top coat, that's what I'm talking about.
Not bad for a lay guy who doesn't know anything about asphalt, you know? But I knew that was the answer. And the second question, if I might, Mr. Chairman, and this will take care of my bullet for your list, it probably touches on a lot of things. I don't know whether you read my mind today or not, but I was going to make this comment to Mr. Slavin, that, you know, since he got here, one of his focuses has been on fixing and improving our accounting situation and the accounting department situation, budgeting situation. And, you know, he's done a, he's done a great job, I think, since he got here. And so, I've kind of stayed away from him in terms of our business relationship with businesses, which is, by the way, at an all-time low. And so, I was going to suggest to him that if he was, if he was open to it, that I would come and have some coffee with him and talk to him about some of the things we started four or five years ago, which really made a big difference when somebody was coming for, looking to have a business in the town of Wareham. So, I wanted to sit down with him and do that. And I think I'll take that as my bullet, because it does kind of touch some of your points from last week. And very briefly, because I know everybody's probably ready to go. But, you know, I try once a week, usually on Saturdays around six A M., to call some business friends in Wareham. That's a good time to get somebody who's busy. And I got to tell you, this week I got my ass kicked. That's very unusual. And so, and I hear what they're saying. I may not agree with what they're saying, but they are our customers. In business, the customer is always right. So, I think there are some things that we need to do. Last year, Mrs. Whiteside and friends worked on a pretty big project to write a book or a booklet, I guess you call it, on how to start a business in Wareham and what you had to do and all that kind of stuff. And it's great, it's online, you can get it in the office. But it's not, it's not the whole package. It's not that respect, that touching of a business that needs to happen to form that good bond and relationship. So, you know, we used to, we had what we called the task force that we started. So, if we knew someone was interested, we got ahold of them. We had a department head meeting. They came in for, you know, an hour. They got every question answered about what they had to do. We saved these individuals tens of thousands of dollars each, just by having every department head in the room at these meetings, so their lawyers wouldn't have to go out and make mistakes and not know about Wareham and then So, I was going to ask if he was at a point where he's ready for that conversation, and now you have your list. So, that'll be my thing for next week.
I guess we know what you're thinking.
That's my, that's my list. You know, because here's the real fact of life, and I've been kind of saying this now for the last year and a half. The proposition two and a half that's going to win is not in a ballot box. The proposition two and a half of revenue is going to win with our business partnerships. That's where we're going to get the money from. You know, we have some projects right now on the, that are out there, that are probably close to seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, that are stuck in the mud. And if we had kept this going and focused on it, who knows? Maybe we would have had a half a million last year, maybe we would have had six hundred this year. But we're losing that money because we're not out there working this. And as much as I appreciate and respect the work that SEDA does, our SEDA group is not designed for this. Our SEDA group is designed for the application and grants. They're not economic development people. So, I just wanted to, I was going to ask you, but no, I don't think you're going to have a choice after next week. I think you're going to freak yourself out and talk to me. So, we've talked about it. I'm not saying anything that you and I haven't discussed recently. And so, you know, I'd like to get on your calendar and come and talk to you about that, if you're open to that.
I think I've only got one question. Who's buying?
I am. Actually, I'll get, if it's over forty-nine dollars, I'll get town council to pay for half of it. How's that? Is that okay?
That's good.
So, you know where it'll be on my list for next week?
I don't know, town council never gets paid, so he doesn't, he doesn't have any money, so I don't want to
All right, okay. Thank you. Liaison reports, Mr. Titlebaum.
Last week, I attended the cemetery commissioners' meeting. It was long, because there was a lot of complex technical discussion about who has authority over lots and graves. But it was a cordial meeting, and I think it went well.
Okay, Ms., now let's do yourself, Mr. Holmes.
Cordial meeting of the cemetery. Would you expect anything else? Now, I'll say, I think that my business speech was
Okay, Mr. Slavin.
May twenty-second, again, Cape Flyer, first trip on a Friday. It'll be in Wareham at seven oh five P M. The Wareham militia will be there to send the train off with a display of their artillery and stuff. So, hopefully, we'll have some citizens take the trip. They come back and forth to be back home in Wareham by about ten, ten, ten fifteen. I attended the opiate conference up in Brockton for Plymouth County. They went through a bunch of different actions they were taking. I believe our police chief, Kevin Walsh, was heavily involved in working with programs as well. South Coast Rail was also this past week. It was information what was happening there and how some of the residual effects for Wareham. Also, discussed there again was our Old Colony Line, which is the one that we're concerned about. And I spoke to Representative Strauss about that, so we're keeping that up there. Mr. Pena and the Canal Chamber put on a business-to-business event at Rosebrook this past Friday, very well attended. It was a tremendous improvement from a year ago, probably triple the amount of participants. I believe that some, basically, some good initiating initiating, initializing some businesses and business development. The planning board met last night. Again, Baypoint was the main topic there. Unfortunately, only four out of the five members were available. And this is a particular issue that requires a, what they call a major or supermajority, which means four out of five have to vote in favor if they pass a site plan. And the council for Baypoint decided not to go forward yesterday because there's only going to be four members there. They'll be meeting again on June 8th. Hopefully, they'll get this thing moving along. That's about what I have. I think I have a meeting tomorrow. I'll bring all the paperwork back with Lieutenant Walczak and I are going to be at the Maritime Academy, basically getting training and information on what happens in an emergency as far as the administration and the town government. When everything goes down, there's no electricity, you can't pay anybody, can't do anything. There's an actual cost. They train people how to function. I'll be bringing back all the paperwork on that. That's it for me.
Mrs. Whiteside, please.
Yes, I noticed in the paper that kindergarten sign-ups are lagging. So if you haven't signed up, little Johnny or Suzie, you should do that because the school has, needs to plan how many grades there are for the kindergarten kids. The Veterans Council obviously has been working very, very hard on the the sober and somber celebration or remembrance for Memorial Day. And I'm very, very pleased with how much energy those people show. And most of them are even older than I am. Council on Aging has been doing a lot of outreach. I think they're getting a little discouraged. So those of you out there who are senior citizens, read the bulletin that they put out and reach out. They have lots of really good ideas and they are here to serve you. That's it.
Okay, I have a few things. The Sewer Department, I'm the liaison there and they're just getting up and running and they're trying to get, you know, emails and so on. And they have one now available. This weekend, I had a multitude of emails about the odor down at the plant. I want everybody to know they're taking it very seriously. They're trying to resolve the issues. The issues, of course, have been long-term. And they're doing what they can to try to alleviate the problem. I hesitate, you know, now that we're not sewer commissioners, people send us stuff and I have to send them back and say, well, we're really not the sewer commissioners and we really don't have that much say over it anymore. But I don't want people to feel that they can't come to us anyway, no matter what it is. So I want everybody to understand that even though we're not sewer commissioners, we still take interest in what's going on with all the constituents for whatever issue it is. And believe me, I passed this stuff on that I got over the weekend to the various people that were required to get the information, that could do something about it. I gave some information to the people as it went along. So I don't mind, you know, getting those emails and those calls, regardless of whether we're not sewer commissioners anymore. But it is a better thing to try to direct it to them first and see where you get as far as that goes. And then we'll talk about it as time goes on. I'm the liaison down there, so I get to bring stuff anyway. The next thing, we have a master plan committee meeting on Thursday. Hey, how do you know that? And I have somebody in the back room saying, yay! And it took a few years to get it. So we're going to have that and hopefully, we'll get everybody to show up and we'll kick off the master plan committee. The town administrator, I talked to him a while ago and it's not in his contract about having a review. However, he's up for it and matter of fact, he welcomed it, if I remember when we discussed it. And the only thing I want to do is I think we're going to talk about the process with him. You and I will talk about how the process will work so that it's fair for everybody and for yourself. And we will, this board will be able to do a review. And, you know, I tell you, not too many town administrators, if it's not in their contract, would say, oh, yeah, give me a review. That just goes to show you the class and the type of man you are. And I think the review is going to be, you know, work out pretty well for you in the end. We'll see. But it's going to be nice that you accepted that. That's terrific. The other thing I want to thank is the Police Department. The Police Department, and I talked to the chief about this, has been working diligently to try to deal with our opiate issue, which is staggering. And they've made a lot of nice busts recently. And a lot of people that have been selling the heroin, they've brought down. They've gone into the schools and done some stuff with the schools on a sort of a sneaky, you know, thing with the dogs. And they're not going to let up. I'm letting everybody know now, this police chief is serious about this opiate thing. So I don't know, if you're selling drugs in this town, if I was you, I'd move because the heat is going to be very hot. Very, very hot. Look, this board, as far as I'm concerned and as far as this board is concerned, we're going to back them up 100% because we're talking about kids. And I will do nothing myself. I will do anything I can to save a kid. And if it means going out there myself and helping or whatever I got to do, it's going to happen. Because this is serious. This is more than serious. When kids are 17, 18, 20 years old and they're dying, that's a problem for me. And I just want to thank them for all they've done the last couple of weeks. They've really been at it and going hard at them and I hope they keep after them. And I want all you, that we're going to take you down as soon as we can. That's just the way it is. All right, so thank you for being the Police Department that we want. And thank you, Kevin, for showing the leadership to get it done. All right, next is the consent agenda. Do we have anything in there? No, nothing in the consent agenda. That means only one other thing. He always gets, he always wins. Motion made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? I oppose. Thank you, Wareham. We'll see you next week.